All right, I'd like to reconvene in the meeting. Could everybody please stand for the pledge leaving? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we begin our meeting by approving the agenda. You can both approve the agenda. You, second. Pam? Any discussion? All in favor? All right, so a public comment. Reminder, this meeting held for public. It's not a public meeting. It's held according to open meeting laws. At this time, we'll entertain public comment. As a board, we value input from the public. Please direct your comments to the Board of Education. We ask you that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. At the three-minute mark, we'll politely thank you for your comments. Please come to the table with a microphone and state your name and address for the board members' record. Is there any community members who would like to speak? Okay. All right, now it's time for a member comments. Are there any board members that would like to make a comment? Rod?
Tim, I would like to commend Bryce Saba. Bryce was a graduate of the class at 2017, and I think for the first time in the history of the school district, we had a youngster named to the all-state lacrosse team. Bryce was named to the second team, small school division, as a defense man in lacrosse. And I think that's the first for the school district. The other thing I would like to inform the board about is that Sharon Sweeney, who has been the executive director of the four-county School Boards Association for, at least for as long as I've been connected with the school board, has announced her intention to retire. That announcement was made at the four-county Board of Directors meeting last week. There is some sentiment on the part of the Board of Directors to take a look at that position and see if by restructuring that position, that it might better meet the needs of the district. As some of you may know, this year Geneva decided not to pay their dues to the four-county School Boards Association. So if you have any thoughts about how four-county could better meet our needs, please let me know, and I'll take those to the next Board of Directors meeting. It looks like for now that the retirement work may be effective sometime in October. And sometime between now and then, they'll be, the Board of Directors will decide whether or not they'll hire an interim director or whether or not try to find a permanent director. But that is something on the agenda for the district.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would do this. From the four-county portion onto the legislative committee, we'll be meeting for the first time on Saturday, September sixteenth, start of the year. And just a reminder for the board and the community that tomorrow night from four to eight p.m. is the school supply event for all kids entering kindergarten through fourth grade here at Main Central Primary, Main Central Elementary, to come and get a portion of their school supplies for free. There'll be a photo booth, free stops, face painting, and just a really laid-back camp time. So if you can come any time between then, just to visit, say hi, and just looking forward to seeing all the kids come. So.
And where?
Living Murcher, twenty-three Great Harbor Road in Ontario. It's across from the Muckville Park.
Anyone else?
Rodden mentioned lacrosse. I would like to commend our varsity boys coach, Eric Carlson. Couple of weeks ago, we went, he invited us to Canadagua Shootout for soldiers. They had a big twenty-four-hour continuous lacrosse game. We showed up at one o'clock Sunday afternoon to watch Wayne alumni play against the varsity team here. And according to the coach, our school district, our boys, were the second highest fundraising group for that event. And when Annette and I got there, it was before those torrential downpours, and the score was one hundred and thirty-four to one hundred and thirty-one. And it was, it was a pretty cool event just to go watch. They had a parent game at two o'clock in the morning where they had forty parents from Canadagua show up to play. They had to wear costumes, and they played twenty-on-twenty on the field. It was just, and Eric's just done a great job with that program. And I've gotten to know him a little bit over the summer, and just, the boys taking, just doing all this stuff with the little kids and raising the money. And I know when we got there, they had raised, not our boys, but the whole thing, fifty-one thousand dollars.
Wow.
So it was a cool event, but.
Any others? Okay. Okay, it's time to have our superintendent report, Detective Charles.
Good evening, Board. We're gonna just kind of jump right in tonight with some of the things that we have. Just an update first around the transitions. We're continuing to work on a number of things across the district just to make sure that things are ready for our kids and that things are smooth for everyone as we transition back into the next upcoming school year. We continue to work on our parking lots and the entrance way. You can kind of drive by it and see what's happening there. It's been very busy with all, as you said, the downpours of rain. The rain has been so busy this year that we stop and start depending on that. But we're almost there. We certainly are expecting things to be kind of all finishing up over the next week or so. So we'll certainly have those lots and entranceway all set the next school year. Signage is up for these schools. Wayne Elementary, Wayne Primary, you'll see the signage as you drive by. Look very nice, and you're all ready to go. We have some painting pieces that we're doing across all of our buildings. We want to make sure that every place is painted like it needs to. We're finishing up some things over a week. So almost there, we'll be ready. We expect before the school year starts. Class lists are pretty much all set. We're still, however, as you know, gaining kids and some kids are going here and there with our enrollment. So we are, you know, some of those class lists, the final ones, like every year, won't be ready to read at the end. So there's some changes on that. But generally, teachers and parents will know who was classroom, who's gonna be in the classroom or whose classroom the child will be in. So that will be going on to parents very shortly. Schedules are all done. We're just kind of putting things in. There's some things that we still need to kind of put in and take out. So every year around this time, we have kids who come in and say, you know, I don't think I want to take this class, or I want to take that one, or I'd like to switch here and there. And so we're still working on that even with our secondary schedules, and that's just what happens every year. So we're working on that as well. And we have some information going out to the public as we always do. There is newsletter, there's a draft in front of you, and we're putting in there, you know, bus routes, transportation information. We had a couple of questions that came to us about the transition. We wanted to make sure that we added that in there as well. Just information for our public as we begin preparing for the next school year. So you'll see that coming out in the mail. Parents will see that within the next week or so. We're pretty much busy there, moving along with them. I want to shift a little bit if I could, just talk about enrollment. So one of those things that ebbs and flows, I have a little form in front of you all on the table, and at each of our meetings at least once a month, we'd like to make sure that we go over the enrollment with you, just to kind of let you know where we're standing at right now. So just kind of want to go over a couple of things. So in June of, let me first start with this document that's in front of you here if we could. In June of two thousand and sixteen, last school year, we had twenty-two forty-six in district students. So we did this by K through six and then by seven through twelve, so you can see what those numbers look like. In September, following that, we had twenty-two forty. So we had a couple of kids over the summer who kind of went and left, and we ended up with twenty-two forty. By June of two thousand and seventeen, which is this June that we just ended, you can see our number went down to twenty-one ninety-four. So you can see how we had some kids leave, some kids come in, but our numbers did go down before the year was out. We do have a population of students, by the way, who kind of are, you know, they migrate from our district or to Williamson or the Sodas or a variety of places for a variety of reasons. And so that's kind of where we ended up the year at, twenty-one ninety-four. In July of this year, summer, as of the first of July, we ended up with twenty-one ninety-two with those who came and went. And as of today, right now, we're at twenty-two oh-two as of this earlier today. So you can see, when you go from June of two thousand and sixteen over to August where we're at today, that's about forty-four kids less, basically, from where we're at now. And there's still time to see some changes. You know, August is a very busy month. Kids are still registering, parents are still moving, kids here or there. There's some people who are renting properties, so the first of the month, we know, middle of the month, that may change some things. But you can see the numbers kind of going down a little bit. I also took some data for you as well. On the second page of this packet, we put in here where our kids who are rolling, where they're coming from, so that you can see the places they're coming from. So we did it by July, and then we showed you the withdrawn students by July as well. So in July, we had twenty-four kids come in. We had fourteen kids withdraw. And you can see where those kids are going to, basically, all right? And then in August, we had fifteen children who came in. You can see where they came from, okay? And then you can see that we had seven kids who left. Some moved out of state, and then several others around, you know, districts that are close by. So when you kind of look at the total of who came in with enrollment, thirty-nine kids came in the door, but twenty-one withdrew, okay? So you can just kind of see that. And we're gonna continue to provide that information so that people can see that. Now, on the top, we just kind of took all of the data and just tried to bring up a couple of points for you there. So from nine sixteen to six seventeen, so we were at, again, twenty-two forty. As of six seventeen, the enrollment was at twenty-one ninety-four. That's minus forty-four students. For us, that's the equivalent of two classrooms, all right? So, you know, we've heard some people say, well, what if the numbers are higher? So far, we kind of are seeing that's not the case right now. We just kind of want to show it to you. The in-and-out trends. So our graduating class, this is something to keep in mind, just so we're aware. So last year, at the end of the school year, we graduated a hundred and eighty-seven seniors at the Kodak Park. You all remember that. And the incoming kindergarten class, as of right now, we're at a hundred and forty-one. So that's negative forty-six students, basically, okay? And then in terms of the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen summer enrollment, so so far, and I'll just share that with you, thirty-nine coming in, twenty-one withdrawn, difference eighteen students. Total enrollment right now, as of today, and we had a couple that came in and went out, so we just wanted to make sure we gave you the full number as of what it was before, about three hours before our meeting, and that's at twenty-two oh-two. For us, so total, that's negative thirty-eight students right now. Still, that's two classrooms, basically. So we're watching the enrollment. We are also gonna be looking for ways to help grow that enrollment wherever possible. We're gonna, as the year moves on, we'll talk about how we might engage with our community and our leaders, but that's kind of where we're at now. So when you go back through the study and you look at the numbers, there was a low, medium, and high number, if you recall that, with in the enrollment demographics area. And what we kind of see, so we kind of went with the middle number, but actually, we're on a higher range that the study very, almost pinpointed accurate to almost the T two percent, okay? So I wanted to share that with you. Okay, so any questions, by the way? Everybody?
Yeah, and the twenty-four kids that enrolled in July, eleven of them were from Monroe County schools, so they must be doing something right.
Yeah, absolutely. And many of the parents and kids who are coming through are very excited to see many of the kids coming and just, so we're excited about the kids that we are gaining, and I agree. I think we're doing a lot right, so we hope to see more kids coming through.
Mathis?
Yes?
Do you know how many kids we've lost to homeschooling? Because I know it's one family that I am friends with that are gonna homeschool. I think they're eighth grader.
So I've heard of one.
I think, I'm just curious if there's a, because I didn't see the quantified number.
So I've heard of one family that is interested in homeschooling that we know, and that may be two children, I believe, that are in the family. But other than that, we've not heard a lot of homeschooling. We've not heard a lot going to private school. We only know of one. I think the child is going to Charles Finney, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I saw one, I saw one on the phone.
But we've not had a big, so there were some people who were concerned that we were gonna have a big leave and group.
Well, it's coming, yeah.
But we have not, no, we've not seen that.
That's a good one.
Yes, absolutely. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Board, we want to shift gears now, so I'm gonna ask Greg to come on. This wonderful gentleman with him. So as you all know, we have been working with the Moody's credit rating, very important because when we go out to finance projects or whatever else have you, keeping the best credit rating possible is really, really important. So recently, we had our credit rating review, and we basically were downgraded from an A-A3 to an A-1 credit rating. And I've asked Greg and this gentleman here to share with us tonight what that means to us, the reasons why that led to that, and then the next steps around that. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to Greg. Ben?
So let me introduce Ben Maslona. Ben is with Fiscal Advisors, they're our financial advisor. He's been here before to speak to the board.
I think the last time was April of sixteen, before we sold bonds for the last capital project.
Right, right. So I asked Ben to come tonight just to kind of, you know, you have the actual report in your board packet. That is the official report that was published. You know, there's a summary on the front page that kind of tells you exactly what's going on. But I asked Ben to come tonight. Ben has also provided his summary here, and I'll let him talk to some of the specifics because he's got some other points that I didn't have, so.
So Moody's will, whoever, I guess I'll start with this. Moody's rates your bonds or rates the debt of the district, it's a credit score. So very similar if you've done a credit score, if you were to go buy a car or a house, same deal. And whenever there's debt outstanding of a school district, even though you're not coming to market with new debt, they do a surveillance because they want to make sure that the rating that's assigned to you is current and up to date. Because although you're not borrowing money, your bonds and your debt is being traded in the secondary market. So they want to make sure that if somebody's trading your debt, that there's an accurate rating. They do this at no cost, but they do do it. And I will tell you this, any change in your rating does not affect the debt you're paying currently. It'll affect future, yes, but not what you're currently having. So they went through the surveillance, and the district had a double A-three rating since two thousand and twelve, so maintained that rating for quite some time. During the last surveillance, they looked at a couple of key factors, really, I would say three key points that they had in the report, which you've probably seen. Number one was the enrollment trend. Number two was the GANÉ and some uncertainty with that. Because, and I work with another district that's the same type. You have a large entity, a large taxpayer, and it is a power plant like that, there's always some question marks surrounding it. And then the third thing is the fund balance of the district, which has, in the past few years, seen drawdowns. Although they've been planned drawdowns, they look at that as a credit negative. So I would say they, of all the points, I've been on hundreds of rating calls and hundreds of bond ratings, of all the factors they look at, finances are by far the most important. And the fund balance within the financial aspect represents probably about ten percent of their ratings rationale. They also look at the economics of the district, they look at your debt profile as well. So they do look at a lot of things, but I will tell you from experience that they look at, the fund balance is a key number. Because there's a lot of districts, or districts municipalities in general, you don't have a lot of financial flexibility. So if the state were to withhold a state aid payment, but you had a bond payment coming due, the only way you could make that bond payment is to use available funds, or the fund balance, really. So it gives a creditor or it gives an investor security that when they borrow money from Wayne Schools, they're gonna get repaid in a timely manner. So they really are focused on that, and Greg and I, you know, were on the call, and I think, you know, that was the bulk of our discussion. It really was. One thing I'd like to point out also, and this is number three on my list, historically, if I were to compare Wayne Schools to other double A-rated school districts, and I'm sorry for using jargon, but double A's, big A, little a, but they call it a double A. In a lot of the other factors, the district was relatively lower than other double A schools. And I'll give you a good example. The full value of the district's about one billion dollars. An average double A has about a $2.5 billion tax base. I believe per capita, full value, district is about sixty-six thousand. A typical double A is about a hundred and eleven thousand. So those are some, just some, you can see those are, you're fairly, quite a bit lower in just those two aspects alone. But what had kept you in the double A category was the fact that at one point, I believe in two thousand and eleven, fund balance was up around almost sixty percent of expenditures. So the overriding factor that Moody's saw was, although you're a smaller entity compared to other double As, that this one thing that you were doing so well, and actually, it's the comptroller's report mentioned too well, that that puts you into the double A category. Even now, Moody's mentions in their report that your fund balance is still healthy, so and by no means the district is in financial stress, according to Moody's. I almost look at this more as a right sizing of the rating because you don't have this one overriding factor that's pushing you into the next category. Right now, you are at the top of the A ratings category. So Moody's goes by the A's, double A, double A-one, double A-two, double A-three, and then A-one. So the difference between a double A-three and an A-one, it's one notch in the rating. It's not a huge jump, but it is, it is a downgrade. Any questions so far?
In today's market, if we were to go out tomorrow and borrow money, what would it mean in increased interest costs to us?
You were looking ahead, didn't you?
No, I didn't.
That's, that's number four. But I was just gonna get to that, and that's, that's the overriding factor because, as I mentioned, this does not impact anything you have outstanding. It's only gonna impact you, or could impact you, moving forward. So I looked at the current market data, and right now, a mid-range double A to a mid-ranged A is about a thirty basis points difference. So basically, that means a three percent versus a three-point-three percent. Again, you're not going mid-double A to mid-A. You're going the lowest double A rated category to the highest single A. So it's a little bit smaller of a drop. Realistically, in today's market, I would say anywhere between twenty and thirty basis points. But for argument's sake, what I did is I ran a schedule. I did ten million dollars over fifteen years. I did it at a, I believe I did a three percent and a three and a quarter, so twenty-five basis points difference. What that would mean is about two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars of added interest expense over a fifteen-year period, which is about fifteen thousand dollars a year. So although it is, it's real money, it's not like you're going to increase two or three-hundred thousand dollars a year on a ten-million-dollar borrow. Yes, there is an impact for sure, but it's somewhat, it's somewhat mitigated. And it's somewhat mitigated for a number of reasons. The district is still, as I mentioned, very healthy. You're still living within the tax cap restraints, and you're still trying to follow what the comptroller unfortunately, you know, mentioned you needed to do. And I always find that very hard to swallow, that the comptroller's office will come in and give a report, and you follow what they want you to do, and the results are a downgrade in your bond rating and a score on the fiscal stress. Both are unfortunate repercussions of doing what, you know, Albany says.
We find that hard, too.
It is. Yeah. So, you know, overall, you're still, I would say you're still at the top of your, in the single A rated category. How could we ever get back to the double A? You have very little control over demographics and industry that moves in and things like that. So the key factors, I believe, to get back to a double A-rated municipality or bond rating would be for something concrete. For GANÉ, you know, fifteen or twenty-year, which I know it's a long shot because, again, I work with a couple of districts with the same, same thing. And then the other thing would be to get the fund balance back up to an extremely high level, which is probably going to be difficult with, you know, Albany always looking over your shoulder at this point as well. Realistically, within the county, you're still rated one of the higher school districts. So I would say that's still very positive. But unfortunately, this is kind of just the world we're kind of living in now, for lack of a better term.
Questions for Ben?
How many years till Moody's go do another surveillance rating?
They could actually do one tomorrow if they wanted to, but most likely, they would look at you in a year, in a year. They do these interim reports about every year, but it's really boil-to-plate stuff, and it's not very in-depth. So I would say you're probably gonna get looked at in a year, and then the next time the district is gonna come to market with some type of borrowing, we'll go through the full-fledged process, which is pretty in-depth and detailed. But that wouldn't occur for some time because currently, there's no projects authorized.
So if I'm to understand you correctly, we probably really shouldn't have been an A-A-three, a double A-three.
The reason it put you.
If only we're there because we had the money that the comptroller told us to spend. Because we still had these other issues with GANÉ and declining enrollment and all those things.
Right, but the cash on hand basically trumps all, yeah.
So it just put us a little bit over the edge. Where now, like you said, we're kind of right-sized and probably where we really could have been.
Yeah, because all the characteristics of our district didn't match districts in the category we were in. It was our very healthy cash position that kind of popped us up there. But we did refinance our outstanding debt during that time and saved money by getting a lower interest rate. So, I mean, we did maximize our time in that spot.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And what I, what I will do is I have the full detailed reports that show the medians that you'd be compared against, and Moody's goes into significant detail. They do all municipalities, then they do schools with populations of over two-hundred-thousand, between a hundred thousand, two-hundred thousand. So you fall in the ten-thousand, fifty-thousand population range. I will leave a copy of those reports with Greg if you'd like me to do that. That way, if you want the additional detail, you can see kind of how you fit, I would say, more closely aligned with a single A-rated municipality or school district versus the double A, so.
Since our last board meeting, the federal courts decided the first round on GANÉ. They decided in favor of the governor's plan. Now, the power companies that brought suit say they're going to appeal that. What would be resolution for Moody's, the Supreme Court of the United States or?
Right, there's, and we had that discussion in detail, and there's really, there's no easy, there's no easy answer to that. I don't know at this point because of just the focus on nuclear plants, that there's ever gonna be an answer to that. Like I mentioned, maybe a fifteen- or a twenty-year concrete pilot, which is never gonna happen again. The other thing that Moody's looks at is, they call it taxpayer concentration. So if you have all your eggs in one basket, or one large taxpayer is paying a bulk, that that's a credit negative. And I'll mention the other school because you probably have read about it, too. Mexico School is in the same boat. So I work with that district as well. It's the same thing. We went through the same process about six months ago then.
So the fact that with last year's budget, or this year's budget, working away from the GANÉ money and trying to separate ourselves from that, that should be a benefit next time we come back out with them.
It should. Because your reliance on the single large taxpayer, the less and less that is.
That should favor us again.
We're headed in the right direction. We gotta keep that going.
Yeah, I think we mentioned.
No reserve usage, less reliance on leftover fund balance, more conservative revenue estimates. And if the state ever gets back to giving us state aid increases that really help us, I mean, our last one was just a little over two-hundred thousand. You know, those are all factors that can help us, but by reducing our budget as much as we did, that was, that was a, that was a big factor to help us start swinging the momentum back in the other direction.
Yeah, one of the positives that we, with the analyst on the phone, was the reduction, appropriation of fund balance in the budgets. That was a credit positive, so it was a good thing. He always tried to focus on the bad with these reports and, you know, but there were some good points as well.
Any other questions for Ben? Great.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll leave you, these are summary pages, but I'll leave you the full reports.
Okay. You can just set them in my office.
You're welcome.
So, Board, we're gonna have Greg now talk over about our school tax rates. We have our suspect pieces back, and so can I, Greg, shift the conversation to that information?
Yeah, tonight included in your packet is we're asking the board to adopt the tax rates for two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. And you can see that at budget presentation time, we estimated the tax rate to be twenty dollars and sixty-three cents per thousand. The assessment came in a little bit higher than what we had there, so the actual rate we're asking you to set is twenty dollars and sixty-one cents. So that's, we did a little bit better than we projected at budget time. The increase on a hundred-thousand-dollar home, I think, is twenty-four dollars and ten cents with the rate we're asking you to adopt, twenty-three dollars and ten cents. But I think it's very important that we meet what we project at budget time. I mean, I always make sure I stress that it's an estimate, but we did a little bit better than that by two cents, so. But we, we did a little bit better than that by two cents, so. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. But you have the whole spreadsheet in your, in your board packet.
Lunch prices, Greg?
School lunch prices, it's that time of year where we look at the school lunch program. We have recommendations for prices moving forward. Our recommendation for breakfast is it stays the same, unchanged at a dollar fifty for the full price. We are recommending a ten cent increase at the middle elementary level and also at the high school level. Raising it to two forty and two sixty-five. Part of this is in conjunction with the Healthy Hunger, Hungry Free Gazette. If I'm saying that right. They actually require you to raise it, you know, to kind of keep with, with the cost. If you look at the write-up that I provided to you, we did end up in the black. But part of the reason for that was the fact that we're subsidizing the program with twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund. We're still in, in a lot better shape than other school districts. I mean, it's, it's a tremendous challenge to meet those nutritional guidelines and still try to turn a profit. You know, Mrs. Wilson is, is good as they come at doing that. She's been here a long time, does a great job. So our, our plan, our school lunch fund is still in, in decent shape. But we do need to, to bump the prices up. And we're asking the Board to approve that. And then this information, I believe it's included in the newsletter that you have, the draft.
Our lunch prices are still very, very reasonable.
Right.
Compared to other districts.
Right. And I'll reduce price meals, stay at twenty-five cents, I failed to mention that. Yeah, I, I still think it's, it's a very good value for what we, what people spend.
Okay, so, Board, any questions at all? Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
And then, lastly, in terms of our report tonight, we're gonna ask Dr. Syracuse to join us. He has some of our test results that have come back. These are the region's results. We are all across the state still waiting to receive the three to eight results. So once we have those, we'll come back and make sure that we share those with all of you. But we'll share outcomes around the student agency exams.
Sure. We do expect to get those three results in the next week or so. We thought they might be earlier this year, but we've got one. So tonight, I'm gonna share with you our region's results. I'm gonna have them disaggregated by students with IEPs and students in poverty. That's in line with our strategic plan, as well as a male/female comparison for you to look at. I'll share with you three years' worth of data, so you can see some trends as well. And I'll just kind of orient you to the graph. All the graphs will be in this, in this format. So what you see first are three different colors. Those, those correlate to three different years. Thank you, Carrie. Two thousand fourteen, fifteen are blue. Two thousand fifteen, sixteen are gonna be in red. And the current school year, two thousand sixteen, seventeen are in yellow. So if you look across the graph, at the yellow, I chose the yellow because it would pop out at you, because it's the most current, the most germane. Here, you can kind of see how our different subgroups have done. On the bottom, you see the five categories: all students, students with disabilities, students in poverty, then females and males. If you take a look at the all chart, you'll see there is a cluster. The first cluster is the passing rate. So on the Common Core Algebra I, ninety-two percent of the kids who took that test passed that test. The second cluster is your mastery rate. So this year, we saw twenty-six percent of our students who took that test achieve mastery. You see a slight upward trend with this exam. One thing I want to point out is that our smallest subgroup are students with disabilities. So they see the greatest fluctuation in, in passing and mastery rates. So we just have to be kind of careful about how we interpret some of those jumps and some of those declines. In this case, you can see, for example, that the females, ninety-six percent passing rate, thirty-three percent mastery rate. They edged out the males on this exam. Eighty-seven and eighteen percent mastery for the boys.
What are we using as a mastery rate, Joe?
Eighty-five percent and higher. So some of the Common Core regions have been broken down into five categories. And they kind of split that, that proficiency category. And then the other ones are still in the four categories: mastery, proficiency, approaching proficiency, which is that fifty-five to sixty-four percent range, or the low pass range in some cases, and the zero to fifty-four. And others, they have it broken down with that aspirational piece right in the middle, the eighty percent. So, we're using eighty-five and higher, just like the state. As a matter of fact, these, this is, this data is all from what's called the SERVES 309 report. It allows us to be very consistent. So what other external folks might use to look at how our students' academic performance is going to be, it's gonna come from this report. So in that way, we could be, you know, we won't see a report out there that shows different data, and it's all referenceable, so.
And it also, like, for example, the Common Core Algebra I, that included the accelerated eighth graders?
This does include the accelerated eighth graders. We had fifty-eight eighth graders take it, and they all passed. And we had a mastery rate in the eighth grade of about fifty percent. So all the graphs will look like this. We'll have four math, we'll have one English, we'll have four science, and, and two circle studies to look at. And then I have all region's exams on the final slide to show you. We do know we have some work to do with our Common Core Geometry exam. You see we had a seventy percent passing rate this year. Slight, slight increase from the, from the previous school year. We have two teachers who are teaching the Common Core Geometry. And as with all, all the region's exams, Mr. Pollan has all the data from those exams by question, by standard. So they're gonna be kind of looking for those trouble areas for our kids. I will say, although the region's comparatives with other districts aren't out yet, I have spoken a lot to other districts about how their, their kids have done. I expect us to perform on par with area districts. And by the way, Wayne Central isn't the only one who's gonna be working on Common Core Geometry. I suspect the state will. And I share that with you because there were three questions that were basically recalled. They had either ambiguous or unsolvable answers. There's a young man from Long Island, a fifteen-year-old, who was, I guess, helping tutor some kids and discovered that there was, one of the questions was unanswerable. And something New York State does not like to do, especially with region's exams, is send out corrections after the exams have been, after the scores have been distributed. And as a matter of fact, we had three kids who went from not passing to passing the exam as a result of those corrections. Good news for them.
I saw one of the ECLIP articles where a group of Long Island schools have sent, have gone together and sent a letter to the State Education Department complaining about this exam. Because statewide, something like sixty-four percent of the students have passed this exam.
Yes.
Lot of feedback and concern around the geometry, especially in our region. Lot of people concerned about those results.
Sure, and especially if I go back real quick. Last year, we had eighty-seven percent of our kids taking past Algebra I. That's the red line. And to go this year to seventy percent, largely the same population of kids are passing the geometry, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a concern. We're, we're doing really well with the Algebra II exam. We've only given it for two years. This is the third year of math. We do, I will say, as we go from geometry to algebra, we do have kids taking general algebra. So there might be sixty fewer kids in this data pool. So to say, these aren't the same, this isn't the same exact pool that scored the, whatever the geometry kids scored and sixty-seven percent passing in the previous year. It's not exactly the same population to get to ninety-seven, so we have fewer kids. As a matter of fact, we have many fewer students with disabilities. So if you look at that sixty-seven percent last year, that was two out of three kids with IEPs. And if you look at a hundred percent this year, it was, it was, it was two kids. So, fewer of those kids taking it. So you're doing great, a hundred percent passing. We really need to get more kids with disabilities to this exam. That's really the answer to that. I wouldn't mind seeing that percent go down if it meant more kids were taking it. ELA, really, we've done a great job with ELA. I'll make that comparative as well. At ninety-four percent last year, three years previous, we, they were in eighth grade. And we probably, I think we were around fifty percent of the kids meeting proficiency on that eighth grade ELA assessment. And you flash forward, and you're at ninety-four, ninety-seven percent this year. That hundred percent, the only thing I'll say about that hundred percent is you have to interpret that with caution. That's our accelerated kids who took it in tenth grade. So that's the first group that took that, that ELA exam. And they were accelerated students, or students interested in, in challenging an AP exam as juniors. So they wanted to get that ELA out of the way. Still, I think solid results, really, across the board. The trend, of course, is that our students with disabilities typically lag behind their peers. And our students in poverty, although on this exam, did quite well, they consistently lag behind a little bit the students who are not in poverty. So, we have to keep looking at that.
Strategic plan, that's right.
What's that?
That's our strategic plan.
That's our strategic plan, yep, very much so. So, the principals have the data. They, the one thing that makes the students in poverty difficult is that privacy. So, we can't really share all our data widely, because, you know, parents and families have the right to privacy and privacy of their information. So what we look to do with these strategies, Tim, is we can look at how we're doing with the larger group of, of students in poverty, but we can't necessarily target this kid in poverty. So we look for strategies that help to close the gap for kids in poverty. Because we also know, Tim, that those strategies are good for all kids. Much like the strategies we, we use with our special needs kids. You know, that tends to be good teaching.
Joe?
Yep.
And our students in poverty, they have calculated just higher, free and reduced lunch, not by any other demographic. So you could have kids, families who are struggling, but may not qualify or may not pay in that.
You could, in recent years, a lot of that has become automated. So Nikki Wilson has seen it become a more true reflection. So in, in, in previous years, parents would have to self-report. So you'd send out the forms, and they would apply for free and reduced lunch. But now, there's, there's a lot more automated, so parents can, if they meet certain criteria, they can automatically qualify for free and reduced lunch, and there's a reduced paperwork. So I think we're getting a more true value, and we have seen our, our free and reduced lunch numbers climb. We're approaching, I think, Dr. Calvin mentioned, up to, we're approaching forty percent? I don't know that we're at forty percent, but, you know, so we, we're seeing that, that go up. I don't think we have more necessarily, I can't say this for fact, but I'm not sure we have more people in poverty. My suspicion is that we're capturing more of the people who fall in that threshold. So Earth Sciences, you know, we have, we have three exams that are below eighty percent, so those are, those are areas to target. Mike's well aware of the, a little bit of a downward trend here, and he is concerned about that. I will say that as, you know, as we look at the assessments, the Earth Science assessment did change significantly in the last couple of years. Not the lab portion, but the written portion. It's a heavier reliance on reference table, using reference tables, on reading comprehension. And we know that some of our kids who struggled with this Earth Science the last couple of years, they've struggled to, to use that reference, bless you, bless you. They've struggled to use that reference table, to read that reference table, and then to answer, to know when to, to look at that reference table. It, it's not good enough to know how to read the reference table. You gotta know when you need to go in there. So that's, I think that's gonna be a point of emphasis this year for our Earth Science team. Yep.
Has there been more of a focus on math in ELA that maybe could've, over the earlier years before now, that maybe results in the science being a little, a little harder, maybe get more time?
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll share, so this is Earth Science, so there's a couple of things. You'll notice that the, the, the girls, once again, outperform the boys on this one slightly. The girls also outperform the boys slightly on the math test. Those two freshman-level tests, which I thought was interesting. But then they level out in maths and science later. So maybe there's some maturity that's going on in the students, that's helping them to, to do better on later. We do very well in our bio exam, which is after Earth Science, for whatever reason. I think that trend is statewide, as well as in the, in the district. No, the short answer is no. I don't think, I don't think this is a result of us taking our eye off of science for math and, and-
And I just said, give me more time in class in math than ELA before, because that was where-
I mean, I'd say yes, if the early, early years, primary years, that, that definitely there's been a bigger emphasis in math. I'd have to think about that, if that's true. I don't wanna just, actually, I shouldn't just say no. That's a good point. Yep.
Joe, we have eighth graders taking Earth Science, too, correct, or no?
No, we, or, the eighth graders are gonna take the biology exam.
Oh, they're taking the environment?
Mm-hmm. So that's actually this one. You can see we do quite well. Yes, let's see, my, my ninety-six percent passing rate. You know, we, we, years ago, we set our mastery rate, we'd like to see that at about a third, we had said. And you can see, we've doubled that with, pretty much with fifty, almost two-thirds of the kids at mastery. Our students with disabilities do relatively well in this exam compared to other exams. Their mastery rate significantly lags behind their peers, which is something to look at. Our students in poverty are right up there still, just a little bit of a gap. And if you wanna know how our eighth graders did, well, of course, a hundred percent did pass it. And we had about eighty-seven percent of them master that. So, they're doing quite well. Though that, that's incredible.
But our, our IEP kids, the mastery rate still was improved on from-
Absolutely. The previous year and previous assessments, other assessments, absolutely. Absolutely. So good, definitely good data. Chemistry, it's a third-year science. Again, you see many fewer students taking chemistry. Probably roughly two-thirds of the kids take chemistry that took living environment and Earth Science. Kids can take general chemistry, they can take forensics. There's a couple of other science options that they can do.
AP Chem?
Yep. So, so these results are pretty solid. There, there's a hundred and eleven kids. Again, we actually had one student with disabilities take this test, so that's that hundred percent. You know, so obviously, we might like to get more, it might be appropriate to get more students with disabilities to this exam as well. Physics is that third one exam that's, that's under eighty percent. I think anything under eighty percent, we really, we really wanna look at. The Board might recall that we just adopted a new Gemini physics curriculum. And I think we'll be interested to see what impact that might have on these results. We do have all kids, all physics kids take the region's exam, whether they're in Gemini or in just region's physics. And, you know, I know Mr. Doran thinks that that new curriculum's gonna be really beneficial to the kids. And I think we'll, I'm hoping we'll see more success on this, on this region's going forward. Very few students with IEPs take, take this exam as, as well. We had two, two students with disabilities take the physics exam. And there's an access thing that we might look at with our students with disabilities as well, with these upper-level sciences. Global history, this upward trend is great. That eighty, if you looked at the years before that eighty-one, they were a little bit, I think we, we dropped to, into the seventies at one point. But they've been climbing steadily. They've done a lot of curriculum work. They've been working to adjust to the frameworks. I think the assessment, although it's not scheduled to change yet, I think some of the emphasis of the exam has changed to more reading for information. Not just knowing facts, dates, and places, but being able to interpret, you know, literature and graphics and things like that. So, fantastic, social studies department all around US, look at that, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, those are great numbers. Mastery rate is at sixty-six percent. You know, students with disabilities, it is a reading test, but there's still twenty-three percent of them are scoring at mastery, which is, you know, it's, it's still a gap. But, we're, we're happy with that. Again, the girls and, and boys, the girls slightly outperform the boys on this, on this one, but not, not too significantly. So it's, so my, oh, so my last slide isn't there, but it's just a overarching bar graph that kind of shows you the tabulation of all of the exams. We, I think, I think the overall piece of information from this, eighty-eight percent passing rate on our, on our region's exams, which I think is pretty good. And overall, I'd say we have some target areas to work on. We're gonna continue to make improvements, but I think the, the team at the high schools is doing a pretty good job. Yep.
For the US history one, is it, I'm gonna guess this, because I don't know for a hundred percent. Seventh and eighth grade do US history?
Yep.
Is there, because I know in the building I work in, this coming up year, we're implementing an honors class where the eighth graders will take this test.
Really?
And we're scared to death of it, because it's heavy writing to pass, but, um-
And reading.
Yeah. But if we have accelerated kids who are doing ELA in math in eighth grade, is it a possibility that we could look into- is it a possibility that we could look into, if people are interested? I mean, because they're taking it for two years. And the rumor mill that I've heard says they're leaning towards more current, less revolution stuff in.
In U.S.
It'll be their second year for what they're learning, more in their second year anyhow, if that's a possibility. I know they're making us try it this year in the city, so.
How about we watch you guys and see how you do?
All my kids are my kids, so remember that.
Does students have the right to challenge it in second?
Yeah.
Eighth graders could challenge it if they wanted.
Yeah, I believe they could. So there's a process, but when we have two kids over the summer, they've challenged a couple of exams in the spring and challenged and passed those exams. Actually, I think that, I think they both met mastery on them. And now they're doing, when you do, when you do a credit-by-exam, it's called, then you have to do some additional work to demonstrate competency, so.
After you've already passed.
After you've passed the test, yep. So they're working on that. They're working on that.
Do we have kids that take, I'm sorry, we have kids that take AP US instead of this? Or do we make all our kids take US?
So we're not, we didn't offer AP US last year. We have, we have, one of the things you hear is, you know, we want, we have Gemini US. We had AP US. We have IB US. We have so many different things that with our kids, they get spread so thin that we don't really have enough kids to maintain all of the AP's interest and just spreading them so thin. So we haven't offered AP US, I think, a couple of years now.
Okay, so we have IB US and Gemini US. Do we still make these kids take? They do.
Absolutely.
So all the kids are in that, okay.
So remember, it took AP US, it's still a difference.
So just to kind of, you know, just to sum up, so you, you know, we have, Tim has mentioned the strategic plan. So we had eight exams where there was growth on the exams. So Algebra One went up from eighty-seven percent to ninety-two percent. Geometry went up from sixty-seven percent to seventy percent. We had several exams where there was, by subgroups, growth. So the Common Core Algebra Two exam, we went from sixty-seven percent to a hundred percent for kids with disabilities. The ELA exam, for everyone, we went from ninety-four to ninety-seven percent. Kids with IAPs went from seventy-three percent to eighty-two percent. Chemistry, we saw growth for our kids with disabilities from fifty percent to a hundred percent. Physics, we maintained a hundred percent passing rate. Global, U.S. history went from eighty-five percent for all kids up to eighty-eight percent. And then for our kids with disabilities, from fifty to fifty-nine percent. U.S. history from ninety-two to ninety-three percent for all kids. Kids with disabilities from fifty-nine percent up to sixty-eight percent. Typically, you would see five percentage growths, not ten and some days, but you can see the growth that's occurring. Also, in terms of kids with poverty, so the Common Core ELA, we went from eighty-nine to ninety-two. Geometry from forty-eight percent to sixty-three percent. Common Core Algebra, maintaining a hundred percent. Common Core Algebra One, from seventy-seven, we started at sixty-eight percent two years ago, to seventy-seven, now up to eighty-four. And then from U.S. history, from eighty percent to eighty-two percent, and this year, ninety percent. So the focus around the strategic plan to look at subgroups, it's working. And all of these exams, by subgroups, you see growth. And that's the dedication of our staff, our leaders, Joe and his work with his team, the curriculum leaders, everybody working together, and strategically looking at growth, performance-wise, for the high school results at least, those are all good areas. So we're doing good. We're on the right track. We'll continue strategically moving that direction.
Isn't that what Commissioner Elia has said? It's not so much the score, it's the growth that your district or your students have year to year, from September to June. Where have they grown? Not so much their score on a test or passing. It's the growth that they have.
And what we've been really concerned about is those subgroups. And so by focusing in, you're starting to see the subgroups grow, and that's really good at the high school. So now we're gonna look for our three through eight exams, and we'll see how that turns out, and we'll be back. Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, so that kinda concludes our report tonight. Board, in terms of board business, we have a memorandum of agreement with our Administrators Association that we're asking for approval tonight. The school lunch prices, you've already heard about those. We have proposed tax levy. We've also heard about that. We're looking for approval on that. And then in terms of the consent agenda, we have the treasurer's report ending for June thirtieth. We do have personnel action for staff coming in for the next year. The CSC, CPSC recommendations, we'd like to have approval of that. The board minutes from July sixth to July eleventh. Our OSU's Cooperative Natural Gas bid is in your packet. We look for approval on that. And the paper bid, there is also a team of one with Gananda Central Schools that we'd like to make sure that we get approved tonight as well. And there is, I believe there were two gifts, cheerling uniforms, and then art supplies that we'd like for the board to accept tonight. So with that said, that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now move on to our board action items. Need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Administrator Association. Ron, second. Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? All right, any motion to approve the school lunch prices? Carla, second. Carrie, any discussion? All in favor? Any vote? Thank you. All right, need the motion to approve the post-tax levy?
The taxes are the tax rates.
Tax rates?
Just the tax rate, we apologize.
Tax rates. Ron, second. Steve, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, now move on to consent agenda. Do you wanna highlight the consent agenda? All right, need a motion to approve the consent agenda? Jeremy, second. Carla, any discussion? All in favor? In favor? Any opposed? All right, we'll move on. I don't think we have any committee reports. We know that we got our dates set up, and they're on the, are gonna be on the website as to them. They will be. I have no board president comments this evening, and I need a motion to adjourn. Jeremy, second. Steve, any discussion on adjourned? All in favor? Any vote? Thank you.